This meeting is now called to order. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Prince?
Here.
Mr. Person?
Here.
Ms. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Corman?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Mr. Bravoni?
Here.
Ms. Perez?
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, one absent.
Thanks, Megan.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move we excuse the absent council member.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Mr. Corman that we excuse Councilmember Taylor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. So, we're going to start off tonight with kind of a fun presentation from Public Works, Greg Zimmerman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of-
I want to remind you, Greg, and, you know, with you and Pat standing together, just want you to look outside, see the sun is shining and we're going to kind of want to go.
I told Pat this can take not a minute over a half hour.
Yeah. Thanks.
Okay, we'll try to make this a little more quick, but, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm Greg Zimmerman, Renton's Public Works Administrator, and I have with me Patrick Zellner, our Street Maintenance Supervisor. Got a couple of slides here, and I'll set this up in a second. There it is. Okay. It's our pleasure today to report to you on a special accomplishment by one of our street maintenance workers, Kip Bratton, who's here today with us. The State Chapter of the American Public Works Association meets on a yearly basis, usually on the east side of the mountains, Kennewick, and it's a real, kind of inclusive forum. They talk about all sorts of public works issues for a few days, a lot of engineers attend it, but more recently, there has been a program put together recognizing that a lot of the work we do is maintenance, things that we do to fix problems in the streets and in the utilities of cities, and the American Public Works Association have tried to recognize that over the last few years and incorporate a recognition of our maintenance workers into their program. That led to the creation of what they call a rodeo competition. That's a competition where some of the best equipment operators from various cities join the American Public Works Association State Chapter meeting every year and have a competition in several events to basically display their skills operating equipment and to see what other jurisdictions are doing and what their skill levels are, and it's a good time, but it's a pretty competitive competition. You have to be very good in order to win these events. Kip Bratton has represented the city well in several of these competitions. This last competition in 2014, he had some unprecedented success, and we were here to recognize that. There are four events in the competition. I think this year there were only three, right, Patrick?
No, there were four.
There were four events, and Kip did very well in the events that he participated in. So, at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Patrick, and he can talk a little bit about the rodeo event and about the four events that they put together, what exactly is involved in these competitions, and then we'll bring Kip up here.
Hi, thank you for having us. It is quite an honor to have one of our maintenance workers do so well in a competition across the state. Just kind of shows that we have some really good employees and they care greatly about what they do and who they are. When they take their skills to the rodeo, what we're looking at is the snowplow obstacle course is a pretty tough course. I know I've designed and built the course myself, and so what they're doing is they're maneuvering the plow with a sander truck with a plow on through obstacles without hitting any cones. There are several obstacles that they must hit, and so they accumulate points towards that. Well, this year, we also added the fleet challenge to try and bring in our mechanics to the competition and be inclusive with them, and so that was the first year with that, and it was pretty successful. We hope to get more cities to get their people involved from the fleet side as well. The loader course kind of changed a little bit this year and became quite a competition. It was skimming a three-quarter inch block off of a two-by-four block without touching the two-by-four block while maneuvering through the course. And the backhoe course, also very difficult, is basically picking up a device with a swinging ball on it on a chain and maneuvering it through cones and then setting it down in the correct place and then picking balls off of the tops of cones and making a basket with them. The whole course really challenges people. Again, the organization, APWA, when they asked a small group of us to become involved as operation and maintenance, it was quite an honor because APWA has always basically been public works directors, engineers, and looking at, like Greg said, that maintenance workers are an integral part of our infrastructure of public works and what we do. They build it, we fix it, and we have to maintain it for years. This is a picture of the loader as he's working through the course. As you can see, it's very precarious being up there looking through the windows and trying to maneuver through, and I don't know if you've ever seen a loader work, but they articulate in the center. It's not like a car where the front axle turns. They pivot in the center, so the dynamics are pretty different. So, here's the backhoe course. As you can see, the device to the right side there is what you would have to first pick up a chain with a ball on it, hook it through the device, and then run the device through the cones, and then pick up the balls after that and make a basket. So, again, that's all another loader course. There's a device where you have to pick up with the ball. Here's Kip, this is actually Kip on the loader, and you can see the blocks sitting on top have to be skimmed off of there, so that's the operator looking down through the bucket and trying to do that.
Wow.
And again, this is a picture of the original course, which was picking up a piece of pipe with the loader and then having to run it through obstacles at different heights while maneuvering through a figure eight.
So, that's actually our last photo. Kip won two of the events. Is that right, Pat?
Absolutely. So, it kind of threw us into a dilemma this year with, this year for the first time, we're sending through APWA the participant winners to Colorado for the National Snowfighters Conference, and so it put, when Kip won two events, he won the truck course and the loader course, and so that put another spot available for somebody else. We had to hurry up and try and figure out which of the other competitors were we going to send. So, Kip actually gets to go to Colorado this year and-
Oh, great.
And participate at the national level.
How many people competed?
This year, I believe there was 43 people. Every year, we started off, there was 21, following year, there was 30-something. It's at the point now where at the conference, we may end up having to do two days of the competition. It's getting so big. One thing I want to say about why we're doing this is not only are we trying to reward our maintenance workers and challenge them with each other, but we want them to meet each other from other cities, other municipalities, share those ideas, the procedures that we do, give them that level of competition. You know, it's a way to kind of reward the guys, you know, the best of the best, and the other side of that is also getting a little bit more of a connection between public works, maintenance workers, and our directors, and our engineers, connect that field work to the drawings, and, because they're, you know, most of the guys are, I'm afraid to talk to a guy in a suit, you know, but it's working a lot. I mean, we've grown that side of it greatly, and we appreciate the opportunity that you give us to participate in things like this. Maintenance, we are, is the way I look at it, the way we look at it, we're ahead of the curve as it is. A lot of other cities around the state look to us to see what we're doing. There's a lot of pride associated with that and our crews, and we appreciate your support.
So, I'm going to ask Kip Bratton to step forward. He's actually got a jacket that the State Chapter of American Public Works Association made for him in honor of his winning the two events, so here's your jacket.
Wow, isn't that great?
Nice.
And if I could bring Kip forward, his wife's here and would like to take a couple of photos over here. If that would be okay.
Can we stand up here? Can I forward?
Does it have his name on it?
Yes, sir.
A front?
Yeah, in front it does.
Nice. I don't want to be in the middle with you. Get closer to me. Thank you.
You've got to make sure you know what it says. That's all right. Okay, great. Okay. Something else I wanted to say, I think is a really important aspect of maintenance. I was sent to Incident Command at Emmitsburg several years ago. Worked with a bunch of great firefighters and police, and on the way back, I realized that Incident Command, FEMA, they're all trying to change the concept of police and fire are only first responders. They kind of used me for the single person in Incident Command, and on the way home, I figured, you know, all the police and fire, they wear blue. Our heroes wear dirt. And so, I coined that, and that actually became our motto for operation and maintenance of APWA, and so when you're out there and you see the guys drudging out in the street, just remember, they're first responders and our heroes wear dirt.
Yeah, I love it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks, Greg, and thank you, Pat, and congratulations, Kip.
Yeah.
One of the things I wanted to say is it's great to have you bringing this stuff forward because the things that are going on in our Public Works Department, oftentimes, people don't see. I mean, it's just something that isn't as visible to the general public and certainly to the council on a regular basis, and we have a lot of quality work being done, and that's great, and it's great to see this type. I imagine that would be a tough competition to win.
Oh, yeah.
Anyway, good job.
And to win two of them.
Yeah, that's great.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I wanted to say too that, you know, I think, you know, so many times, the public sees big projects going on around town, and it's private contractors that are doing that work, or people the city's hired, or, you know, builders have hired, but when I do see those projects that our own city crews do, I'm just so impressed by the high quality. I think nobody can match the quality that our own team puts out, and, you know, I don't know if the public really kind of understands how that works, how, you know, I think of our own crews, some of the most versatile in handling the emergency jobs and the littler jobs and things, but you guys just do great, great work, so.
Well, and the guys take great pride in it too, and, you know, and that's a lot because of, you know, the equipment that you provide for us when we ask for things, you know? We're not asking because we want it, we ask it because we need it. We want it to do our jobs, so.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, next thing, let's see, Ron Struck is going to introduce salmon recovery.
Thank you, Mayor Law, members of City Council, and for the benefit of the audience, I'm Ron Struck at the Surface Water Utility Engineering Manager. Tonight, we have a special presentation on the progress on our salmon recovery efforts in Water Resource Inventory Areas Eight and Nine. This is an effort that the city has been a part of and a partner on and a member of since 2001. This is a regional effort to improve salmon and protect and improve salmon habitat, and that includes all the jurisdictions in both watersheds, along with other agencies, stakeholders, and interest groups, and this effort really started as a result of the listing of Chinook salmon under the Endangered Species Act. Water Resource Inventory Area Eight includes the Cedar River, Lake Washington, Lake Samamish, and so all parts of our city that drains of the Cedar River or Lake Washington are in Ria Eight, and Water Resource Inventory Area Nine is the Green Dewamish River and along with the Central Puget Sound. Tonight, we have Jason Mulville-Guntz and Karen Bergeron, excuse me, here to make the presentation. Jason is the Lake Washington, Cedar River, Lake Samamish Watershed Coordinator, and Karen is the Green Dewamish and Central Puget Sound Project Manager, and I'll turn the presentation over to them.
Thanks, Ron, for that introduction, and thank you, Mayor Law, and the rest of the council for having us here to talk to you tonight. I'm hoping that our presentation is fun, too. But I do-
We like salmon.
Yeah, okay, I like to eat it, too, I'm sure. I do want to not stand between you guys in a 78-degree weather day, so we will move through it, though.
We appreciate you being here tonight.
Yeah, thank you again, and my counterpart and colleague Doug Osterman, who's the Watershed Coordinator for Ria Nine, intended to be here, but he had a family emergency and was unable to make it, so he sends his regards, and Karen has filled in admirably, so she'll be here if you guys have questions about that watershed.
Good evening. I do have to say, that's a tough act to follow.
Okay, so the purpose of my presentation tonight is twofold. It's one, to let you guys know that we're at the 10-year mark of implementing Chinook salmon recovery in both of our watersheds. We initiated this work back in 2005, 2006, and we're getting just about to the end of that 10-year mark, so I wanted to give you an update on where we've been, what we've accomplished, and what we have left to do. And secondly, similarly, our interlocal agreement that enables that regionally coordinated effort to happen, which Renton is a part of the interlocal agreement among the jurisdictions in both Ria Eight and Nine to enable that work, that's coming to an end at the end of 2015 as well. So, for context and background, we wanted to give you a presentation, so you guys, when you see this, coming up in the next couple of months, you have that background as you consider the renewed ILA coming up. So quickly, the outline of the presentation, I'm going to cover a little bit of geography for you, give you a brief timeline of salmon recovery, talk to you about the recovery actions we've done, the governance leadership structure that we have, our funding, the accomplishments we've made in 10 years, some specifics on Renton's priorities and what you guys have worked on with us, and then give you the next steps on the interlocal agreement renewal process. So what is a ria or a waira? Ron briefly described it, but it's basically a watershed. It was an unfortunate bureaucratic term that was coined back in 2007 for watershed planning purp-, or, I'm sorry, 1997 for watershed planning purposes. Salmon recovery came along, and we adopted the same sort of geography watershed, so we just sort of took on this name. I prefer the actual watershed name, Lake Washington Cedar-Samamish, which is Ria Eight, and the Green Dewamish-Central Puget Sound Watershed, which is Ria Nine. And this is a map of King County showing the four watersheds that are part of King County, and you'll notice Ria Eight and Ria Nine there are kind of in the middle of the county. And a unique thing about our two watersheds are we are the most populated and urban watersheds in the state, which, as you can imagine, provides us with some unique opportunities, given all the people that live here, but also some very serious challenges on the double-sided coin of that with all the urban development that we have. So, drilling down a little bit, here's a map of the Lake Washington Cedar-Samamish Watershed, which is the area that drains through the Cedar River, down through Renton into Lake Washington, drains through Issaquah Creek, down into Lake Samamish, all the water that comes through the Samamish River, all the tributary streams that drain into the Samamish River, into the north side of Lake Washington, out through the Ship Canal and the Ballard Locks into Puget Sound. Couple of things on this map that I want you to get are the shaded areas. Dark green are our Tier One, high priority areas for salmon recovery. That's where the salmon come back to spawn every year. Our lighter green areas are what we call Tier Two. That's where the salmon tend to use, not all the time, but infrequently, but they're very important for spatial diversity, which means if one of our dark green areas were to be unavailable to them for some catastrophe that we had, they could use those lighter green areas, so we try to focus on restoring some of that area as well. And then the beige or gray out areas largely are urban area. The habitat there has been degraded enough that we don't spend a lot of time working to restore those areas, but they're still very important for water flow and water quality purposes. Also, all the shorelines of our lakes and the Samamish River and all of our marine nearshore is considered Tier One as well because they're critical for the juvenile salmon as they make their way out of our watershed, and they need places to rear, find food, hide from predators, all that kind of thing. We have two Chinook populations in our watershed in Ria Eight. We have a cedar population that comes in through the Ballard Locks, makes a right-hand turn at Lake Washington, goes on up and through Renton, on up into the Cedar River, and then we have a Samamish population that makes a left-hand turn at Lake Washington after it comes through the locks and goes on up into the Samamish River, some of the tributary creeks there, and then on up through Lake Samamish into Issaquah Creek. So, it's quite a big area. For Ria Nine, our watershed just to the south, you guys are part of as well, and the point of the presentation here is it's joint because Renton participates in both of these efforts, just to make that clear to you. Divides the watershed into sub-basin areas, an upper green, middle green, lower green, the Dewamish, and then also the nearshore, which includes Vashon Island as well. The rings here on this map represent habitat areas that are linked together like a chain, essentially. The red links I want to point out specifically because that's what interests Renton most, and those are what they call the weakest links, basically the habitat is in the most poor condition and really needs focus to be improved, so I wanted to highlight that. And then the big red dot there is Howard Hansen Dam, which cuts off fish passage into that Upper Green River Watershed, so that's why it's kind of a break in that link. So, a real quick timeline for you. As Ron noted, Chinook were listed under the Endangered Species Act as threatened in 1999. That prompted the local governments in both watersheds to come together for a couple of main concerns. One, there was concern that the federal government was going to come in and tell us what to do, tell you all how you were going to do salmon recovery, top-down, and they wanted a little bit more local determination. You guys wanted to say, hey, here's what we want to do to respond to this listing. And secondly, there was concern about lawsuits being brought for take of an endangered species under this new listing. So they thought if we come together and we proactively show how we're addressing this listing, that'll help with that as well. So in 2001, that's exactly what happened. The governments came together under interlocal agreements in both watersheds and said, okay, we need to come up with a recovery plan, so began work on a recovery plan in 2001 through 2005. And in 2005, those plans were ratified by all the partner jurisdictions, 27 local governments in Ria Eight at the time, and 17, I believe, in Ria Nine. And implementation began in 2006, and we set out a period of 10 years as kind of our initial timeframe that we wanted to see how we were doing. That was enough time that people could wrap their brains around doing this work, and then we said we'd see how we were doing at the end of that. 2007, the federal government finally approved and adopted our plans as the Plan for Salmon Recovery, the federally approved plan, and we've been implementing since 2015. As I noted, we're through the end of the first 10 years, just about, and our interlocal agreement that enables that work is sunsetting as well, so we need to initiate a renewal process. So our plans, I want to emphasize to you that both our watershed plans are part of a bigger puzzle for salmon and Puget Sound recovery. Each of the two watershed plans is part of the Puget Sound Salmon Recovery Plan. We're two of 14 watersheds in the sound, and those 14 watershed plans are rolled up into chapters of the Puget Sound Salmon Recovery Plan, and then that plan in turn is rolled up and is a huge component of the action agenda for Puget Sound recovery. So, salmon recovery is fundamental to our ability to recover Puget Sound, and I just want to draw that connection for you. So governance and leadership. Salmon recovery is guided by groups in both watersheds that are composed of representatives from local governments, 40 in total between the two watersheds, and then a variety of stakeholder organizations and members from community environmental organizations, business, the Port of Seattle, the King Conservation District, water sewer districts, and then our state and federal agency partners, as well as some interested citizens. And the real critical thing about these groups is they foster such a strong sense of regional governance and regional leadership on salmon recovery, but it sort of spills into other things as well when you get those folks together around that table, and they bring what each individual jurisdiction is able to bring to that table. It leverages across the watersheds for the broader watershed benefit, so it's a pretty powerful group when you get them together. And these are the groups that Renton has a seat on both of these organizations, the Ria Eight Salmon Recovery Council and the Ria Nine Watershed Ecosystem Forum. Your city administrator, Jay Covington, is the representative for the Ria Nine Forum, and most recently, Councilmember Prince has been the representative for Renton on the Ria Eight Salmon Recovery Council, and we've appreciated both of their efforts there. The role of those groups really is, it kind of boils down to four main things. It's directing our implementation and our funding, giving us policy guidance and direction, helping to educate and engage more broadly around in our communities, and then also building the capacity for our groups to be able to do this work. And I want to emphasize, while we focus on Chinook salmon recovery, that work is inherently multifaceted, and so we touch a variety of other really important regional priorities that you are very aware of, including fish passage, both at Howard Hansen Dam, but also at the Ballard Locks. We integrate with hatchery and harvest management to make sure that the work we do on habitat is as well-coordinated as it possibly can with hatchery management, hatchery operations, as well as harvest policy. And then we also work on these broader vision efforts, like the Lower Green River Systemwide Improvement Framework that's focused on how do we do flood risk reduction as well as habitat improvement in the Green River, Lower Green River, and a similar effort in the Cedar River for kind of a vision, river-wide vision of how you bring those multiple benefit and those multiple priority efforts together on a single plan and implement that. We also focus on green shorelines. How do we improve making softer greener shoreline alternatives to bulkheads in our lakes and our nearshore environment? We do interface with regional stormwater management. Stormwater is a huge component of salmon recovery and a very vital connection there. And then we really emphasize streamside stewardship, knotweed removal, and replanning with native species as much as we can, and ultimately, as I mentioned before, this all rolls up into Puget Sound recovery. Funding. Both of our watersheds combined, we allocate roughly $4 million a year across the two, it's about $2 million apiece, to our local government partners, as well as our nonprofit and community group partners, and there's several sources of state and federal funding that are available to our watersheds that would not be available otherwise if we didn't exist and do the work that we're doing. That includes the Salmon Recovery Funding Board, Puget Sound Acquisition and Restoration Funds, both of those are state capital funds. The Salmon Recovery Funding Board does get a federal match, so we're bringing in federal funding, as well as a lot of state funding for that. And then the EPA National Estuary Program, which is focused on Puget Sound recovery, we've been able, because salmon recovery is such a huge component of Puget Sound recovery, been able to draw a lot of that additional federal money to our priorities and bring that to our watershed as well, so I wanted to note those funds. And then a unique aspect of our watershed is we get some local funding that's awarded to us for allocation every year. Until 2012, it was provided by the King Conservation District, and since then, it's been provided by the King County Flood Control District as cooperative watershed management grants, and those local funds enable us to really leverage a lot of additional state and federal money, bring that money to bear on our local communities and our local watersheds. The interlocal agreement funding, I mentioned there's 40 local government partners. Each of those local governments pays an annual cost share to share the cost of implementing these plans. The formula for that cost share is based on your area of your jurisdiction, your population, and your assessed value. Basically, it's a proxy for what the watershed, what your jurisdictional impact is on the watershed. And for Renton, the cost shares for 2015, the total Ria Eight cost share is about $541,900. Of that, Renton contributes $17,655. In Ria Nine, the 2015 cost is $411,961, and Renton contributes $14,846. So what have we accomplished with that funding? We've rolled up some numbers of the habitat improvements that we've made, and they're pretty amazing, actually. We've done over 3,500 acres have been protected through easements or fee title acquisition. We have restored nearly 800 acres of streamside riparian area, and that includes invasive species removal, replanning with native plants. We've either removed or set back more than two miles of levees on the Cedar River and the Green River, and a corresponding roughly 125 acres of floodplain has been reconnected, letting the river kind of explore its space, act like more like a natural river, reduce flood risk, and improve the habitat at the same time. And then in Ria Eight, the lake shore is critical, as I mentioned. We've restored over 8,000 feet of lake shore, and in Ria Nine, the nearshore environment, that marine shoreline is critical, and they've restored a little more than 3,300 feet of marine shoreline. So focusing on Renton now, I wanted to highlight a few projects for you all, just make you aware of what you guys have worked on to date. In the Lower Cedar River, Ria Eight's really focused on trying to get some work done in that lower section that goes right through Renton. We've awarded, or recommended and awarded $150,000 grant to Renton to work on that effort, really identify what some opportunities might be in that lower section. It's really, really challenging, as you know, right through that area, you've got Boeing on one side, your airport on the other, right through the downtown core, but where are there some spots, some nooks, some crannies that we can improve the habitat as the salmon kind of run that gauntlet right through there? So, looking for that, and hopefully that will come up with some opportunities soon in the coming year. Cedar River Stewardship in Action is a program that's focused on working with public and private landowners on the Cedar River to remove knotweed, which is a huge problem, and replace that with native plants along the river, and Renton is working on that with Forterra right now to do that work within your city jurisdiction. A lot of that work's been done for years, for at least three years now in the upper section of the Cedar River, and now we're now working down through Renton as well. The Cedar River Salmon Journey, many of you may be aware of that program. Every fall, the Friends of the Cedar River Watershed coordinate that program, bring out volunteer naturalists to tell the public about salmon, and as the sockeye and the- And as the sockeye and the Chinook are migrating through Renton especially, there's two or three spots in the Renton community where they focus these events each year. And they have spoken with over 13,500 folks just last year, so they've, they do that on an annual basis, reached that number of people, which is pretty amazing. And then projects I wanted to highlight, projects like the South Lake Washington Shoreline Restoration, right out in front of Boeing, right there on the lake shore, as well as the work that was done in Upper Springbrook Creek. Those projects really demonstrate how you balance restoring the habitat while you're also trying to make sure that the economic vitality of the area and the community is maintained. So, those are really good examples. You continue to get a lot of good floodplain management support through that Raya Nine work and working and partnering with the Corps of Engineers. And the Environmental Science Center has done a lot to educate and be a resource for Renton School District students as well in Raya Nine. So, what's next? We, as I mentioned, we're going to continue to implement our plan. We've got a good plan right now, we're working, working on it right now. We've got annual grant rounds in operation, so we're working to allocate those funds that we have. We'll be updating our plans. We're at 10 years, as I said, and we want to, we want to kind of note what we've done, fold in new information and chart a path forward for the next 10 years. And we'll be renewing that inter-local agreement, as I said, and our memorandum of understanding as well. So, you all will see that in the coming months for your consideration. And finally, for moving recovery forward, this is a long-term effort, we're, you know, our Raya Eight's plan has 50-year goals, we've charted 10 years, there's more to do. We've done a lot, but there's a lot more to do. It really is in the hands of our local communities. We get to decide whether we want to have salmon coming back to our streams every year. And we face a lot of challenges in doing that. As I mentioned, building, building public support and political will for a long-term effort is challenging, but we continue to focus on that. Funding is critical. It hasn't been to the level that we've needed, that our plans identified and our, and our goals there, but we, we work every day to advance getting more money in different ways and looking for multiple benefit opportunities to, to advance our funds. And then climate change and ocean conditions provide some uncertainty to our work. We're just learning more about what, what those changes might do to the work that we're doing. And I'm heartened that a lot of the work we're doing on floodplain restoration and our shoreline restoration is largely the work that we're being told you need to do in order to make your communities and your ecosystems more resilient to both of those, those changing conditions. And then of course, land use pressure. We live in one of the most, the fastest-growing regions in the country and how we do our land use, how we grow our communities in the future is really going to have an impact on how successful we can be in this salmon recovery work. And then lastly, I just want to emphasize to you all that local governments working together on this really do make a difference and we've really appreciated Renton's strong leadership and support and participation in this, this effort. With that, I will ask if you guys have any questions.
Thank you Jason. Any questions from council members?
I have a question. Under accomplishments, there's nothing listed about salmon.
Right. What do you mean specifically?
Well, what's the change in 10 years? Has all this work's been done?
Yeah.
How are the numbers?
It's a, it's a good question. It's a hard question to answer because Chinook salmon, their life cycle is on every four years. So, both Raya Eight and Raya Nine have spent a lot of time and effort and money to monitor the salmon recovery or the salmon populations as they come back each year and the juveniles leave each year. We try to get what we call fish-in, fish-out status. And what we try to do is, is do that every year so that we have a chronicle of, of what we've had in terms of returns and what we're sending out in, in terms of juveniles. We're starting to see for the Cedar River in particular, some good trends. Adult, as I said, adults, hard to really pin that the work that we're doing is, is making a difference because the adults out in the ocean, they face so many uncertain, unknown survival issues that when they come back to us after four years, we just hope we get a lot more of them. And what we, what we have control over is our habitat. So, what we use for a better barometer of how we're doing is the juveniles that we send out, that rear in our water shouldn't get sent out. Those numbers have gone, I wish I had a graph with me, those numbers have gone up significantly in the Cedar River. And so, we're hopeful that if we continue to improve the habitat, we're going to send out more of those juveniles so that we'll get more adults back. That's the best we can do, given that they spend that much time out in the ocean and face so many challenges out there. But we have control over that habitat component and we focus as much as we can on that. So, the trends are improving for the Cedar River, the Samamish River population, I can't say unfortunately that they're improving quite as much, if at all, it's kind of a flat line, if not a slightly decreasing trend for now. But the Cedar River is kind of a bright spot. But again, the, the cycle is annual and we see one year we'll have a great return, the next year, we kind of fall off quite a bit and it's hard to know, looking at the adults, what the costs are, but the juveniles have continued that trend, like I said, has continued to increase significantly.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
Hey, it's a good question. But have we also seen salmon returning to, as we've gotten rid of like hanging culverts and things like that, barriers, have we seen salmon returning to places that they hadn't been in a while? Are we seeing any of that?
Yeah, absolutely. In fact, there's two great examples in Raya Eight and I'm sure Raya Nine has some as well. One, most significantly, has been the Landsberg Dam up on the Cedar River when the Seattle Public Utilities opened that up to Chinook access. They had closed it off for many years. Once they opened that up, Chinook salmon now had 17 additional miles of stream to spawn and it's become a huge spawning ground and spawning area for them. So, that was an incredible improvement in terms of fish passage and access to habitat and we've documented that there's many, many spawning salmon that go up there every year. And the second example is on Issaquah Creek, they just removed a big dam there back in 2013 that similarly has enabled salmon to access areas that they haven't been to in 40, 50 years. 11 miles of habitat there and they were, the Department of Fish and Wildlife was saying that they were seeing 45-pound adult salmon in upper reaches of Issaquah Creek that they hadn't seen in, you know, 50 years, which is incredible. So, in just one year. So, they really are an example of if you let them get there, they're going to get there. So, it's good.
I'd like to highlight the Upper Springbrook Creek project that the city of Renton did in partnership with the Corps of Engineers. And my understanding is that it was not anticipated to have the salmon coming back into that area. And that shortly after they did the project, in fact, it might have actually been very shortly after they did the project, they actually saw salmon returning into that stream. So, that's the type of work we'd like to continue to do.
Wow, that's great.
Any other questions, council? Well, thank you very much, Jason and Karen, for coming out. We appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
I know we'll be having some discussions as the ILA and so on come forward in the next month or two.
That's great. Thank you all. We appreciate it.
Thank you, goodness.
Okay, we don't have an administrative report tonight or anybody sign up for audience comments, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. We have five items for council consideration.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move that we adopt a consent agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Corman. Will we adopt the consent agenda? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to unfinished business, Mr. Prince.
No unfinished business, Mayor.
Mr. Person?
No unfinished business.
Hey, Ms. Palmer?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corman?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a Utilities Committee Report to present.
Okay, the Utilities Committee, Committee Report. This is regarding the establishment of the Southeast 165th Street Sewer Extension Special Assessment District. The Utilities Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the preliminary Southeast 165th Street Sewer Extension Special Assessment District. The committee further recommends staff proceed with the establishment of the final Special Assessment District upon completion of the construction of the Southeast 165th Street Sewer Extension Project. This is signed by the Committee Vice Chair and Member.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
Move the council concur in the committee report.
Then moved by Mr. Corman, second by Ms. Perez. The council concur with the Utilities Committee Report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Pavoni?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Perez?
No unfinished business.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to resolutions and ordinance, so we have one resolution this evening.
Okay, this is a resolution regarding establishing a moratorium on residential development within the commercial arterial and residential multifamily zones. A resolution of the city of Renton, Washington, adopting a moratorium on accepting applications for residential development within the CA, Commercial Arterial and RMF, Residential Multifamily Zones, except within the city center community area and for previously approved and valid land use applications and establishing a termination date.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, Mr. Person.
Move the resolution, resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Corman, that this resolution be adopted as read.